Good morning, I apologize for being a little late. Okay, did, uh, what, where did you leave off? Okay, so we already did the pledge?
No.
Okay. So, let's, uh, call to order. I don't see a roll call, but let's do a roll call.
Supervisor Parker? Supervisor Adams? Mayor Edelen? Councilmember Morton? Councilmember Hoffa?
Here.
Oh, she's here. Oh, thank you. Mayor Rubio?
Here.
Councilmember Alexander? Mayor Carbone? Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmember Garfield? Mayor Dallas? Councilmember O'Connell? Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, if we could have the pledge of allegiance, if, uh, Mayor Edelen would lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the requirement of which it stands. On the nation of God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Introductions. Mr. Hulamard.
I'll, I'll do my best, but I think we're gonna start simply with a note that we're gonna, um, get some assistance today from Candace Ingram to help us facilitate. The chair, I think, has already started the meeting. Uh, the idea is to go through a little bit of the rules of the road about how we're gonna handle the day. I think everybody knows everyone, so I, I don't think we need many more introductions. And, um, so this will be a straightforward study session. They're not asking for actions of the board today, but staff is absolutely prepared to take direction with respect to a follow-up to this study session, which will be a more of a workshop format, but a, uh, an attempt to get to yes on some form of a transition plan, and that'll be on July thirteenth. So, we know all of you already have that date on your calendar for a board meeting, but, um, I'd like to turn, uh, this over to Candace, if it's okay with the chair that we move in that process?
That's cool.
Candy.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me all right? Very good, thank you. Thank you for being here. I know you have a full day ahead of you, and I will be facilitating today. It's a study session for the board. We are scheduled to meet until one thirty. The purpose of the session is to provide information for FORA board members and the public regarding the draft transition plan and the planning process. Following presentation of information, the board will then have an opportunity for discussion and comment. There is no action about approving the draft transition plan being requested today. It will be helpful, however, if, uh, later in the board discussion, the board can help provide comments in any direction to staff about the issues or content that may need to be further considered or addressed in the next board session, which is July thirteenth. Today's session is being recorded, and it will be posted on the FORA website next week, usually within two to three days. The format for today's study session focuses on providing information by segment, by chapter, by topic that's contained in the draft transition plan. FORA staff is going to be providing an overview presentation for each chapter, and the board can certainly comment, uh, throughout the presentation of the segments. But most of these materials have been seen previously, either in board meetings, in TAC meetings, posted on the FORA website. So, um, as such, you may want to consider first hearing the overview information on each chapter, and then having discussion after all the segments have been presented. And we will, in the board discussion, go chapter by chapter. Having said that, please note that at the end of each segment, as noted on your agenda, there will be opportunity for comments from the public on those items. This structure allows the board to consider any public comments in its discussion later today. But today is not the only opportunity for either board or public comments on the draft transition plan. As I previously mentioned, the next board meeting is July thirteenth, and it is scheduled for further discussion on this draft transition plan. To help prepare for that session, it would be very helpful if the board and public comments can be submitted in writing to FORA by Monday, June twenty-fifth. That allows time for inclusion of comments, because remember that materials need to get out to you as a board and out to the public, usually, um, at least a week ahead of time. So, if you can remember to try to get your comments in, and preferably in writing, um, by Monday, June twenty-fifth, that would be very helpful. Comments are encouraged, and they are very welcome. The, your questions or your comments can be emailed to planning@fora.org. It's planning@f-o-r-a.org. Or by mailing to the FORA office, which is at nine-ten A, Second Avenue in Marina, nine-three-nine-three-three. By contacting the FORA office at three-seven-three, I'm sorry, at eight-eight-three-three-six-seven-two. Or by faxing to eight-eight-three-three-six-seven-five. Some quick reminders for today, or what's noted on your agenda as rules of the road. Let's please recognize and respect that there may be differences in thoughts and opinions. Let's be courteous to one another and suspend judgment by listening to others in the discussion. Let's stay focused on the group conversation and avoid side conversations that can divide attention. To the extent possible, please be succinct in your comments and questions. And again, if there, there is additional opportunity for more commenting in the July thirteenth session and going forward, and ideally in writing. And we will take a break somewhere around noon time. In the meantime, if you need to stand up, move around a little bit, please feel free to do so. Do you have any questions or comments for me at this point? Yes?
Thank you. A quick question, thank you for the overview. Will comments that are made today from the board members or even from the public be automatically incorporated into the draft document that will be distributed, distributed, so that they don't need to come back again to the staff for incorporation? If they're agreed upon, I should think, you know, specifically?
They will certainly be reviewed by staff, I think, and compiled in the information that will be provided for the thirteenth.
So if we feel, if there are things that we need or want to be included, we can't rely on it being done today, we have to submit those in addition to comments today?
The, what, what happens today will be a record, and staff will use all of that in providing a response back to the board at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other question? Thank you very much. Um, let's get started, and I'm going to ask FORA Executive Officer Michael Hulamard to please provide us a brief review about the history of FORA. Mr. Hulamard?
Yeah, thank you Candy, and, and, uh, for the board members, uh, there's a fairly, there's a multi-page background already in the document, which you can read. It gives you a bit more detail, and these comments are not intended to replicate that, but to highlight, um, very wise man, at least I thought he was a wise man. My grandfather always used to tell, tell me, and I know all of you've heard this, that you don't know where you're going if you don't know where you've been. And so, a little of this is about where we've been. We don't need to beat this up too much, because each and every one in this room understands the work that we're doing here as a recovery program. We know that, uh, this particular installation was announced for closure in nineteen ninety, and the closure actions actually started in nineteen ninety-one. And as a consequence, this region wound up with rather significant issues, including the need to address the recovery from losing thirty-five to thirty-seven thousand in population, the jobs that came with that population, and that were provided by the base, the economic contribution of well over half a billion dollars, and in tertiary impacts up to one-point-two or one-point-three billion that was in nineteen ninety dollars that we lost in this region from the loss of Fort Ord. And, uh, significant other things, like the need to replace infrastructure, that some of which had been, uh, multiple decades, and in a few locations even almost a century old, as well as the fact that we had remnant buildings that still had hazards that needed to be removed, including tenacious asbestos and lead-based paint that caused, uh, have carcinogenic potential impacts. So there was a significant problem associated with all of that. Um, in early part of the transition process, uh, the, from military base, the conversion process to civilian use, this region began with a regional effort by the cities of Marina, Seaside, Delray Oaks, Monterey, along with the county and San City, coming up with the Fort Ord Reuse Group. That started the regional planning process, and while that was being done, a draft plan was being developed at the same time, and then shortly thereafter, the Fort Ord Economic Development Authority began with the county and Marina and Seaside as the primary jurisdictions that encompassed that organization to be the successor to FORGE, which was an informal group. And that process was stalled several times, and guess what? The stall was mostly because of disagreements about what the planning authority and what the financing programs and how it was gonna be recovered. So, regional leadership at the time decided it was important that there be an entity that looked regionally at this resource as a way of conserving the quality of life and the very important things that this region looked at in terms of how it envisioned itself in the future. And so, that push for a single entity wound up with the Fort Ord Reuse Authority being created under state law, and when the Authority Act was approved in nineteen ninety-four, it authorized this agency to facilitate the conversion of the civilian reuse, along with putting together a comprehensive plan, a transportation plan, a public facilities improvement program, and especially a financing plan that would support all of those plans and programs and the jurisdictional recovery for the Monterey Bay Regional Economic Recovery. So, given that, uh, FORA did all that it needed to do. By ninety-seven, adopted a plan, did all the environmental review under CEQA. The Army did all of their environmental review under NEPA. We had lots of work that was done over the years, envisioning that there would be a recovery complete by eighty percent completion by two thousand and fourteen, and that was in state law. By two thousand and twelve, when we did our review of the progress of the base reuse plan, it was clear that we, by two thousand and fourteen, would not be anywhere near eighty percent, and the financing plan, the oversight, and the other programs that FORA were undertaking needed to be extended, and thanks to Senator Manning, and at the time Assemblymember Alejo and others, we were able to get an extension that was originally requested to go to two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty. And that extension now also required that this organization plan for a transition. That extension recognized all the impacts of the economic downturn, the problems associated with removing, uh, buildings that had remnant hazards in the buildings, and the impact of lawsuits against the United States Army that slowed the munitions recovery program, so those lands weren't available for your use. So, this transition plan process, which the board has been undertaking for well over two years, in fact, uh, the start of the transition process began in February of two thousand and sixteen, is now coming to a head with some absolute deadlines facing this board. In order to comply with what the law says, the board must do, which is approve a transition plan and get it to LAFCO by the end of this year. So, that's sort of a, a little bit of background, uh, where we've been. Sherry will now take everybody through some really important background points, and before I forget this, at the end of the meeting, I really wanna thank Sherry for the extra work that she's undertaken, the fifteen-hour days, the fact that she was in the office till midnight last night. I'm exaggerating, she was only here till nine-thirty. Uh, but the fact that Steve Ensley and Sherry Damon and others on staff, including Jonathan Brinkman, have made that extra effort in addition to all of their other duties to take on condition planning, so that this board can have the very best information in its deliberations and making a decision about the transition. So, I'll send it back to Candy.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Hulamard on the information he presented? Okay, then let's move on and ask Ms. Damon if she'll please move us through the segment presentation.
Great, thank you. I'm Sherry Damon. You've seen me and you've heard me many times. This is not gonna be any different. I try to keep my comments focused and brief as we go through the chapters. I've tried to give myself a ten-minute-per-chapter limitation. But I think it's important to go over what we're gonna go over. So, part of the additional transition planning process, um, looking at the background and context, bringing the board up to the same place that the transition ad hoc committee members are, updating the information, so we're gonna go through some of that. And then how that draft transition plan is organized, and then diving into the weeds in the chapter analyses. So, here we go. Mr. Hulamard referred to, oops, I gotta remember, I gotta click over here, referred to this. This is our mandate by state law. We have to assign assets, liabilities, designate the responsible successor agencies, and provide a schedule of the remaining obligations, that is, when they're gonna be addressed. Um, and it has to be approved by a majority vote eighteen months prior to, um, FORA's sunset for December thirtieth. So, our, my plan is to hopefully bring this back to you for a vote in the September, October timeframe, so that it gives staff enough time to prepare the, um, LAFCO application materials that are necessary to submit the plan to LAFCO. So, where have we been? Two and a half years. In two thousand and sixteen, um, there was a task force convened. Ultimately, the board adopted a dual-track approach. Extend FORA on the one hand, continue transition planning. In two thousand and seventeen, another task force was convened. Out of that task force, a recommendation of a single entity to complete the FORA, uh, program and to collect the revenues, um, seek a legislative extension of the FORA CFD, and to, um, allocate administrative liabilities on a voting percentage basis. Two thousand and eighteen, yet another process, a refining process, to continue with transition planning, to look at what the breakdown, a bigger breakdown of the FORA program is into the multiple agencies, and to look at a side-by-side comparison of what a single entity for a legislative extension would look like compared to a multiple-agency approach. The two thousand and eighteen TAC was diligent in their job. They met multiple, multiple times, and I wanna thank them for all their efforts. They met virtually every week from the end of April until May thirtieth, to, in order to bring you all of the information that you are gonna receive today. So where have we been? Transition plan goals. I think it's important to remind everybody for context. These were the goals that the board adopted, the majority adopted, in two thousand and seventeen. Implement that base reuse plan, um, economic recovery. Implement all the base reuse plan mitigations, the policies. Collaborate, collaborate to maximize your regional resources and commit to a fair and equitable distribution and contribution toward finishing that program. And here's your update. So, in terms of expenses, this comes out of your two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen capital improvement program. It's, um, been reviewed by EPS. Um, you have a hundred and thirty-two-point-three million dollars post-two thousand and twenty in transportation-related expense or cost. Um, seventeen-point-one for augmented water, and habitat management is projected at forty-five-point-one million post-two thousand and twenty. That's a hundred and ninety-four million point five, um, post-two thousand and twenty. That differs pretty substantially from what this board saw last year, which was in the hundred and seventy-nine. It's about twenty-nine, twenty million dollars more, and that has to do with costs associated with transportation. Um, also different from last year is the ESCA program. You'll note, now there's a zero there. Last year, there was a seven-to-ten-million-dollar number, but we were successful in negotiating a contract amendment with the Army to address those post-two thousand and twenty, um, ESCA-related, uh, obligations that we would be doing. So, that's projected at zero now. And with respect to the CALPER's liability, this is just showing the CALPER's estimated, terminated agency unfunded liability. The current projection is six-point-six to eight-point-eight million dollars. As this board knows, and the public should know, or will know now, um, FORA and its, um, leadership has set aside substantial revenues to address this particular liability. There, it, the board recently approved a one-fifteen trust, which will commit five-point-seven million dollars toward this obligation, or toward this liability, and there's an additional million dollars, um, that is set aside to also address this liability. As we move forward toward transitioning or sunsetting, CALPER's will be requested to do a final actuarial analysis, which will refine these numbers even more. So, as we get closer to that date, and that will happen sometime at the end of this year, we'll be requesting that resolution from the board and sending a request to CALPER's. So, integral to how we pay for those expenses is our capital improvement program. Showing you a graphic representation here of a form of analysis that the TAC worked on. And I think it's a really valuable one, so I'm gonna take you through it. Um, basically, it looks at what is it, what is the function, what are we doing? And why are we doing it? Is it because of a law? Is it because of a contract? Is it because of a board policy? Can that obligation or thing be completed prior to June two thousand and twenty? That's either a yes or no, or and/or what's left if we can't complete it. And finally, what are some options post-FORA? Ultimately, this board will be directing what option it would like to see as the option for the transition plan. So, taking us through the capital improvement program, it's a blank screen. No, not really. First, hey, we've got like three hours of talking. Three hours of talking. So, first thing, what is it that we do with our capital improvement program? Well, the capital improvement program, coupled with the community facilities district, is a program of revenue generation, revenue sharing, setting of priorities, and implementation of base-wide improvements. Why do we do it? We do it because the Authority Act told us to do it. It said, "You shall prepare a base-wide public facilities plan, and you shall prepare a public financing program to implement that." Additionally, CEQA says in our DRMP that we are required to do a capital improvement program, which will assure the levels of service as we move through the, um, implementing of the base reuse plan, and contracts. We have plenty of contracts, implementation agreements, and other contracts that implement parts of that capital improvement program. From implementation agreements to reimbursement agreements, um, those are the basic agreements that implement that. Can it be completed prior to two thousand and twenty? Well, we all know, the answer to that is no. The estimated post-two thousand and twenty expenses are a hundred and ninety-four-point-five million dollars. That comes right from the capital improvement program, which is a combination of projections, um, from our economic consultants, from our land use jurisdictions who are providing us with information about their development projections and revenue generation. Um, and all that is put together in a prioritization system, so it all works together here. And so, what are your options? Well, you can extend or replace the funding, and you can delegate. You either do the base-wide, authorize extension of FORA, or you delegate the base-wide improvements. That's how that, that analysis works. But I'm gonna talk a little more about the capital improvement program, because I think we focus a lot on that revenue generation component, and it's a really important piece for background and context as we move forward and the board starts to make decisions about what it wants to see in the transition plan. So, your capital improvement program is financed with three revenue sources. Our community facilities district, special tax, which pays for the bulk of habitat management, water augmentation, and transportation. Land sales revenues, FORA's fifty percent, which is authorized in state law, and also by contract, um, which pays for things that the CFD cannot pay for, like building removal. Um, but pieces of the extra that's not used for building removal rolls up into the payment of, to reduce the overall expenses of habitat management, water augmentation, and transportation. It helps keep those, um, fees a little bit lower. And then finally, property taxes, which address caretaker costs and prevailing wage. Um, there's a piece of the property taxes that go into the capital improvement program. So, just as important as where that funding is coming from is how we can collect our community facilities districts, so fees. So, that leads us to a discussion about entitled development and proposed development. And the reason that's important is when the FORA CFD goes away, it has to be replaced with a new fee of some sort, whether that's a new TAMZI fee, a new city fee. It's a new fee, and there is a black-letter law on projects that new fees are not applicable to already entitled development in the absence of an agreement. And I know there are some development agreements out there, because these projects are generally long-term projects, but not all of those agreements deal with future fees or new fees. And that is something that development lawyers push very strongly against, opening up their projects to unknown new fees. So, here are the projects that have been entitled through the FORA process. Um, you can see in Marina, there are three projects that have been entitled. I understand that Cypress Knolls may be coming back with a revision here in the not-too-distant future. Delray Oaks has the RV Resort Project. Seaside has their resort project, which was found consistent in two thousand and five. And the county has East Garrison Project, found consistent in two thousand and six, and which is well underway. So what's that mean in terms of dollars? Well, the capital improvement program estimates the CFD dollars that come into the program, and that's based on the projections that the jurisdictions give to FORA. Um, so, by two thousand and twenty, entitled development is projected to raise about nineteen million dollars. And that is spread out among the various jurisdictions, but not surprisingly, Marina is expected to generate about ten-point-six million, and the county about five-point-nine million um, prior to two thousand and twenty, as long as development projections go as they've been projected to go. Post-two thousand and twenty, if you extended the FORA Community Facilities District, and this is just what has to be replaced, if you replace the CFD, this is what the CFD would generate based on the entitled development projections that have been provided to FORA, and that total is about seventy-two million dollars. These numbers have been generated and reviewed by our financial consultants. Um, they also are meshed with our capital improvement program. So you can see that, again, not surprisingly, the bulk of entitled development fees are coming from Marina. And with the second runner-up as the county of Monterey, but substantially lower than Marina. Future projected revenues, those are what would be generated on future projects as those projects have been described to FORA by the jurisdiction. So, Delray Oaks, uh, has a development projection, which would, would have generated twenty million dollars in community facilities district fees. City of Seaside, um, about twenty-six-point-nine million. That includes those, some caps on the development. So you have about fifty-five million dollars in proposed development. Now, that development may or may not ever get approved or finalized. The only fees that are really assured right now are The only fees that are really assured right now are those that are on entitled development. And that is assured to the extent that they continue to develop like they said they are, want to develop. So that's your update on the Community Facilities District fees and potential lost CFD fees. So here's how it breaks down in terms of funding obligations. If you look at post-2020, those entitled fees are about $72.2 million. You got transportation at $132.3, Habitat at $45.1, and Water at $17.1. So you cover a chunk of that with the entitled development fees. Proposed development is about $55. something million. So that covers another big chunk, if you can collect that. I'll just say that the proposed new development, it's easier to capture a replacement fee system on those proposed projects than it is to capture the revenues on the existing entitled projects. And that's because future projects aren't entitled. So as you, as the jurisdictions go forward, they can either create new financing mechanisms and impose them on the new development. There's more flexibility. The contracts that they negotiate ultimately with their developers can include revisions about how they want to address that dollar amount. So your gap is about $67 million. Land sales revenues would normally make up that difference, or property tax revenues would make up that difference if the FORA CIP were in play. It's just an update. So let's talk about breaking down the FORA CFD. What happens when we shift from a special tax, the FORA special tax, and we start moving toward a nexus-based type of assessment system? So the special tax allows the FORA Board, allowed the FORA Board to say, you know what, residential, we want residential to bear a higher amount of our costs, and we want to give a break toward our economic development drivers. So land uses for office, industrial, retail, and hotel will pay a little bit proportionally less because we want to encourage those kinds of uses. That hasn't been exactly what we've seen. We haven't seen a lot of those economic development uses yet. But we have seen the residential uses have been going great guns. As you shift to a nexus-based system, the proportionate amount of costs shift, your economic drivers, your land uses that provide jobs for folks are going to go up. So they're going to pay more in order to develop office space, retail space, hotel space, and industrial space. Likewise, same thing with water. You can see that you still are paying more for those revenue generating uses, and a little more on the residential, not quite as much as in the transportation system. But because each type of assessment, whether it's transportation or water, has a slightly different nexus approach that it follows, which is what results in the difference between the two. I'm going to use the transportation assignments. I'm going to say assignments in quotes. This is only for illustration, to show how the capital improvement program works. So for transportation, and it's also our biggest chunk of expenses at $132.3 million. So what is important about this table? All this information is included, with the exception of the program, I don't think the program status is included in your capital improvement program, but everything else is included in the capital improvement program, a little bit different format. What's important is the lead agency. In this column, you're seeing FORA. This is how we implement our base-wide improvements. This is the build section of the capital improvement program. When FORA sunsets, there's going to be an assignment column. Who has to do this if FORA can't complete it? And these are proposed assignments as we currently see them. When's the estimated date of completion? When is FORA projected to finish these projects? Well, for these build projects, these dates are the estimated date of completion for each of those projects. How much are they going to cost? And how much is the FORA obligation? You'll note that the estimated costs and the FORA obligation are equal. That's because in this program, FORA is doing both the cost, the build, and the obligation. It meets both. But there's a second part to the capital improvement program, and it's demonstrated in this chart with respect to the transportation assignments. You still have the lead agency, but you'll notice that there are different lead agencies. So for several of these improvements, Marina is the lead agency, or Monterey County, Monterey Salinas Transit, and the Transportation Agency of Monterey County. Notice there's not really any assignments other than in Monterey County, and those indicate that there's not a reimbursement agreement yet for those projects. There is a reimbursement agreement for the lead agencies that are shown on the left-hand column under lead. That means there's already an agreement in place about how FORA's capital improvement program will share revenues with those jurisdictions on these projects. When's the estimated date of completion? Now, this is different from the chart that I just showed you. This is a funding obligation. When will FORA's obligation be complete? And those dates are shown here in this estimated date of completion. Estimated costs, those are provided by the jurisdictions. What do they think those projects are going to cost for them to implement? And finally, you have a FORA obligation, which is a percent based upon the TAMSI reallocation studies, how those work together, what is the projection of base use on those off-site projects. And you can see that FORA doesn't contribute 100% to any of those projects. They're all estimated to be more expensive, but it's a significant contribution and financial contribution. So for example, on Davis Road, you can see that project is estimated at about $55 million. Contribution toward that is about $12 million. And it's estimated that if the FORA CFD were to remain in effect and everything developed like it was supposed to develop and is projected to develop by 2020 to 2023, that obligation would be satisfied. The county would be receiving its additional $12 million from FORA. So let's dive in. Now that you've got background and some context, we're going to go right into how your transition plan, draft transition plan is put together. And so you have several chapters. You have a table of contents, you have a background, and an executive summary. Mr. Houllamard has covered most of the content with his introductory remarks today on those two pieces of the draft transition plan. You have chapters that deal with specific subject matters and specific contracts, for the most part, related to those subject matters. You have a conclusion or consideration. Right now, it's drafted as a consideration because the board has not given its conclusion as to how it wishes to proceed in the transition plan. We have draft legislative amendments. Right now, those are drafted as considerations for the board to consider. And finally, you have draft contract summaries and assignments. This board has seen parts of that previously with the first chapter where it summarized the obligations, and then those micro, micro charts that are virtually unreadable. Finally, your transition plan has some reference materials, the side-by-side analysis that was worked on in the TAC and was requested by our legislative offices. You have a copy of the Authority Act as it's currently written, and a, the role of federally recognized local redevelopment authorities that was prepared by Cutoc Rock. There might be other reference materials that we haven't included, but for the purposes of today, this is what we have so far. So the layout, summary of the obligations. Why are we doing it? What are we doing and why are we doing it? Next part of that are the contracts matrix. Those are currently contained in the appendix at the end of chapters because integrating those is a little tricky. And so we've compiled all of them at the end. Ultimately, they will be linked in the document, so you'll be able to click on it, and it will take you to the contract summary matrix. All of the contracts in those matrix are linked documents so that board members, their staff, their attorneys, the public can click on those and see what those documents say. Finally, you have, actually, you have notations, which talks about some issues and questions, TAC issues, and some discussions, a summary of some of those discussions, and finally, considerations. That's how it's laid out. And this is an example of one of those contract matrices. You'll see this is in microtype. It's easier to read online, so I'm not going to be throwing these up on the board as we go through each of the chapters because they're virtually impossible to analyze or read in this format. But just to show you what they look like, they have the contract on the left, the year the contracts were entered into, the links, what kind of obligation are they, an asset liability obligation, and then a proposed assignment column. There are also some notes and questions that go hand-in-hand with that. That's supposed to be cross-referenced with the summary material. So are you ready? Let's dive, dive into administrative first chapter in your transition plan. So we go through a very brief history of our administrative liabilities. Essentially, you have two big picture administrative liabilities. You have CALPERS. We talked about that earlier. It's estimated at 6.6 to 8.8 million dollars. It comes from a longstanding FORA Board policy to participate in the CALPERS program. And then finally, you have the other big obligation liability here is your LAFCO indemnification agreement, which we have not entered into, but we will be required to enter into when we submit this plan to LAFCO. If that provision becomes operative, it's estimated that it will cost in neighborhood of $300,000 per year if there is an indemnifying act that we need to contribute to. And the FORA Board, in its budget, current budget, has taken action to identify amounts to set aside for that in this year's budget. So what is it that we do? Here's that same analysis piece. We provide CALPERS to our employees. We are going to be required to sign an indemnification agreement. Why are we doing that? Well, the contract with CALPERS is pursuant to the board policy, and we're required to address it when we do a transition plan. It's a liability. Indemnification, the same way. Government code requires this board to submit a transition plan, and LAFCO requires us to sign an indemnification agreement. Will we be fully finished by 2020? Well, probably not, but hopefully, we've set aside enough dollars to cover that in total. Again, it's an estimated amount of 6.6 to 8.8. We currently have 5.7 that has been authorized to be put into a 115 trust, and about $1 million in set-aside funds for, to address this terminated agency unfunded liability. Final actuarial will clarify the amounts in that one. And indemnification most likely will not be completed prior to 2020. We have set aside money for that. What are your options? Assign any gap that's not fully funded by FORA to all the jurisdictions in accordance with the voting percentage. That's what this board identified last year to do. And CALPERS, the indemnification agreement would be the same thing. If there is a gap and it's not covered, the, anything that was unfunded in terms of indemnifying LAFCO would be assigned on a percentage basis to all jurisdictions, landholding, all voting Some of the key issues that the TAC considered, what is potential liability for successors? Who manages the LAFCO real party and interest litigation on transition plan if it extends beyond 2020? Who assumes responsibilities under the, a potential settlement agreement if it turns out there is litigation and it settles, or there's a court judgment? Can or should FORA seek extension of various insurance policies to provide gap statute limitation coverage for other miscellaneous, I'm going to call it other miscellaneous administrative liabilities like workers' comp, potential board liability for something that maybe is not done quite right, things like that? Who receives and maintains FORA records? And do we want to keep the website? So your transition plan includes some considerations for the board. This is staff's draft, and I will say that I am not the only staff who has worked on this. There, as Mr. Houllamard said, it's Mr. Houllamard and Mr. Ensley and Mr. Brinkton, myself, we are, we're a team at FORA. Kind of takes a team to pull all of this together. But here are some considerations for the board. Assign those administrative liabilities on a voting percentage basis. Prepay as many PERS obligations as possible, which I think is what the board direction has been so far. Should FORA, FORA should assign the existing insurance policies and related dollars being held for those purposes. Policy renewals, however, would be the responsibility of the successor entities. Records to be provided to the local libraries, what we're recommending, and to the jurisdictions. So luckily, electronic storage, we're working very hard to make sure all of FORA's records have been converted to electronic media and, you know, providing everybody with a two-terabyte hard drives, not necessarily cost prohibitive or difficult. That way, we all have it. And extend, extension of FORA with provisions to limit potential CALPERS liabilities, potential options, should the board choose to go that direction. They're just considerations, they aren't. And then in your transition plan, you have a side-by-side analysis. This is what we were directed to prepare, what it looks like to transition, what it looks like if there's an extension. And the green side on the left are the, for lack of a better word, the pros or the benefits of transitioning or extending. And the pink are the cons or some issues or risks associated with each of those ways of proceeding. And good news, we've made it to water wastewater. Long and lengthy history, but suffice it to say that there are lots of contracts that govern water and wastewater, from the Army and MCWD to, and FORA, to, to agreements with Monterey Water Resources, Monterey Pollution, Monterey Regional Pollution, I don't know, Monterey One now, MRW PCA. Lots of overlapping agreements, but fundamentally, most of the water rights and infrastructure has already been conveyed to Marina Coast Water District. So we don't have to really deal with that part. But we do have to look at water allocations, the reimbursement agreements, how we break down, if we choose to break down, water augmentation and how that, that looks. So what is it that FORA does now? We do three main things. We do public representation for the ORD community. We have a water wastewater oversight committee. We allocate water wastewater rights, and we collect revenues for water augmentation at this point. And we do all of those things, for the most part, by contract, with the exception of the last one. Revenue generation is also by state law and SEQA. Timing, not everything is completed at 2020. And what are some options? Well, with respect to public representation of the ORD community, really, the ultimate way to address that is full annexation by Marina Coast Water District. Currently, they have received all of the water resources, the water rights and the water infrastructure that serves the entire ORD community. And in the memorandum of agreement with the Army, it requires all of us to provide a fair and equitable amount of water to everybody on the community in, who receives property in that transfer. But the annexation so far with, from Marina Coast is only part, a partial annexation of the ORD community. So one way to deal with that is full annexation, or to create some other kind of represented, representative body to address the entities that aren't annexed in but are provided water through service agreements or other but are provided water through service agreements or other agreements. With respect to allocation, allocations are set in the by-board policy. They are memorialized that each jurisdiction, land use jurisdiction will comply with those as part of the implementation agreements. There is a first right of refusal to surplus water that FORA retained. So that was not transferred to Marina Coast Water District. And finally, you could either assign it to Marina Coast, you can assign it to other successors, or you could modify the contracts. SEQA contributions, financial contributions. You could have Marina Coast included in their rate capacity structure. You could continue to have the jurisdictions raise the funds and pay to Marina Coast. That would have the effect of reducing their capacity charges. That might be assessed. So there's a difference in who pays and how they pay. Or you could extend the FORA CFD and just continue to generate the revenues and paying them and sharing them with Marina Coast like we currently do. So some of those key issues that the TAC talked about are how do we provide public representation? How do the adjustments to the water allocations occur post 2020? Right now, we have a process that we can revise those. How do you define, approve, and pay for the augmented water supply? How do you ensure future water service and annexation of the entire ORD community? And should some future service areas be required to pay annexation fees? So my understanding is as MCW moves forward with annexation of, of future ORD areas, they would most likely be required to pay annexation fees, which the current service areas are not required to pay. Should only new development pay for capacity, i.e. water, augmented water supply charges? Or should the augmented water supply continue to be shared on a base-wide basis? We included a whole bunch of recommendations here or considerations for you to think about from assigning the water wastewater obligations as identified in the spreadsheet. Continue the implementation agreement requirements that each land use jurisdiction comply with the FORA water allocations and assign that to MCWD. So MCWD would be required to enforce those allocations or be the watchdog, if you will, on those allocations. MCWD would be required to provide water service contracts to all the FORA members who are not currently annexed into the water, MCWD service territory. At some point, would be required to annex all former FORA lands into its service area. The right of first refusal in the Army memorandum would be assigned to those jurisdictions with unentitled future development. They are the ones that are limited right now by the water supply. So it seems appropriate that any surplus water be provided to those jurisdictions to figure out how to allocate any potential future surplus water that the Army might liberate pursuant to the terms of that agreement. Augmented water project activities that are not completed or funded prior to 20, June 30th, 2020 would be assigned to MCWD. And alternatively, extend FORA in order to continue to raise the revenues for the augmented water, reducing capacity fees, shifting it to new development. So that what would happen is new development would pay a lesser fee because we would be defraying a big portion of that, about 17.1 million dollars, to be exact. Finally, you have a side-by-side analysis of what happens in transition and what happens in extension and the pros and cons. These are in your slides. The slide presentation is on the web. So I'm not going to go through these in order to keep it as short and concise as possible and get through all the material. I'm not going to go through these in detail. And at this point, I think we are to the first public comment, and I'm going to turn it over to Candy.
Thank you. Before we go to public comments, are there any questions, clarifying questions for Ms. Damon on the information that she provided? I'm not asking for comments or a long discussion at this point from the Board, but just simply, did she say anything that you need a clarification on? Okay, and there is a question.
Under the slide simply called Funding Obligations. I think it was on, perhaps it's not close enough. Under Funding Obligations, there are expenses. It's not clear, I mean, it is clear the CFD is proposed. It's not clear how much of the expenses listed for transportation, HCP and water are also proposed.
So may we go back for a moment to the slide that she's referencing?
So I have a page number other than that. It's called Funding Obligations. That's it. Thank you. Slide 13. Yes, yes, yes. So you see on the left, it says a CFD proposed. So this is a proposed revenue pro, or proposed projects, correct?
Right. So this is broken down. On the left-hand side, we talked, the slide before this one, talked about the concept of entitled development and future or proposed development. That's why it's called proposed, because those proposed projects haven't been approved yet. And so in this slide, it's just showing your entitled development. So if no other development happened, the only development which would happen and be assessed if your FORA CFD continued on would be the entitled development. That would raise about 72.2 million dollars. The proposed development is the future proposed, future fees on proposed development which has not yet been approved but which is hoped to be approved and which the jurisdictions have submitted to FORA that they intend to approve. That's those fees. And then the gap is covered through land sales and property tax revenues.
And should those projects that are proposed not come to fruition? What would the expenses be? What would be eliminated?
The expenses would be exactly the same. The expenses don't change. How you generate the revenues changes.
I see. I would have assumed, and perhaps I'm wrong, the CFD or development revenues would be charged to cover the expenses due to the project. But you're saying that all the infrastructure would have to be in place whether or not the project comes to fruition.
And there's a reason for that. And the reason for that is as part of the planning process, it considers full build-out of the plan. So the transportation, so when the TAMSY study comes in, it looks at not just the entitled project, not the projects which have just been approved, but also what could be approved, because it's a plan. It's a, how do you anticipate what's coming forward in order to meet the impacts on the system? And that transportation piece is a transportation system. It's looked at as a whole. Where there are, there are some opportunities, I think, potential opportunities to address those expenses, to reduce them. Maybe in the Habitat Conservation Plan area. Right now, you have an HCP which we are undergoing processing, but it's not been released yet to the public. There could be a backup plan which might reduce that amount to a lesser number, which would bring your overall expenses down. But probably not in the transportation arena.
So the, the roads would go in whether or not the thousands of homes were there?
So remember the transportation piece? That is a cumulative piece, which is onsite roads, offsite roads, and regional roads. That's what that is. So about 30 some odd million is for regional roads that TAMSY is going to be constructing.
Okay. And on the next slide, I guess that would be number 14, if the slides were to be numbered. What is a nexus-based water?
Nexus-based water is a form of assessment which says, how much impact does each land use have on the water supply? So a tax does not have to be a full nexus. You have a lot more discretion to shift how you assess different land uses. Whereas nexus requires you, requires a land use to pay only that which they impact, which they have a direct relationship to.
So in current terms, would that be considered a capacity charge? Or what is it? I understand CFD, but I do not understand a nexus.
So I think part of the issue might be, with respect to water rates, it's a little trickier. I've oversimplified for purposes of nexus. Water rates, you have a rate, you have a connection fee, and you have a capacity charge. So capacity charge would be assigned on a nexus basis. You would say, if a hotel came to you and said, "I want to connect to your system," you would say, "Oh, hotels use more water, so they are going to pay a bigger piece of your capacity charge." They most likely will pay a different rate too, because they have a bigger impact on their water, on the water usage. That's the nexus piece.
Are there any other questions on the slides? Ms. Morton?
Sorry. Thank you. I'm, you know, forgive me, but I still struggle with the term nexus. Sorry, Sheri, I don't mean this to, in any offense. But just a quick question. If you could put a different word there for my brain just right now, what would that be? Would it be impact? An impact-based water, impact-based transportation? So all of those impacts would be added in to come up with the answer? If that's the answer, then just say yes, and I'm happy. Thank you very much.
Attributable would probably be the one word, attributable to the use. Clarifying question, yes?
Yes, just on slide, the numbers are so small. What number is that?
That's a bullet.
Oh. I don't know. What is this one?
This is, I think this one is 11.
Oh, she's so good. She has eyes. Okay, we're going to go to slide 11, but I don't think it's 11. If that was 12, 11, 10. Perfect, slide 10.
Which, which one is that, Gail?
Sheri, you made the point that the land sales revenue, this is the one that has the three prongs that, that you have a CIP. And then you have land sale revenues.
That one?
And you use this statement. If the land sale revenues are not used for building removal, that you said it would roll up.
It does.
In the CIP for transportation. So that's the basic premise that we have here at FORA. What I'm trying to understand in this slide and in your presentation, does land sales revenue roll up to CIP based on the assumption that we have approximately $10 million worth of blight removal, building removal that we're trying to achieve in the FORA plan? Or are you saying it rolls up to CIP after land sale revenues completes all of the responsibility of the county, city, and Marina Seaside? That we would continue to use our land sale revenues for removal of all of our, I know you guys don't call it blight, but we do, all of our blights? So can you tell me when you mean that rollover occurs?
So actually, this slide has, doesn't have to do with the issue that you're raising. You're, you're asking, I believe you're asking, how does this relate to what happens post 2020 with respect to the jurisdictions? And that's not what this slide is intended to show. It's just intended to show how the FORA CIP is currently financed. As we move forward, if the Board decides to break down the program, it might decide that land sales revenues that are currently committed as part of the implementation agreements go back to the jurisdictions to address building removal or future building removal. Or they, it might go into a single entity escrow account or a single escrow account to provide dollars for other obligations there. But this slide doesn't say that. This slide just show, is just showing how your current CIP is currently funded.
Okay. And currently, we have the Stockade and Marina. We have approximately 5.9 million for Seaside.
Close.
Something like that. And we have a disputed how much we still owe under a contract to Marina Community Partners. And that's the blight that our land sales, collected by FORA prior to its sunset, would complete. And thereafter, any land sale revenues would go to CIP.
Currently, the only, only the Stockade and the remaining buildings in Seaside are the FORA Board's building removal obligations.
So I think the short, short answer to your question, Ms. Morton, is yes. If FORA were continuing in the absence of any change of policy by the FORA Board, once all of the building removals that have been designated, designated as the FORA obligation shown in the, I call it the bottom of the line, on the bottom part of Table 3 in the Capital Improvement Program have been completed, any excess land sales revenues would roll up to address habitat management, water augmentation, or transportation, unless the FORA Board changed its policy and designated more building removal to be a base-wide obligation, in which case then land sales revenues would be required to address that particular line item because you cannot use the CFD dollars to do building removal. You can only use either property taxes or land sales revenues. Those are the only two revenues sources.
Then to follow up on clarification that Ms. Schreiner has raised on slide 13 was that we would characterize all of these as obligations. But in fact, it's true that we don't pay for things until we collect the funds here at FORA, correct?
We are a pay-as-you-go organization. That is true. But these are all obligations that we have committed to in our Capital Improvement Program.
But if FORA were to sunset, the pay-as-you-go is what you're demonstrating here that as you go and collect your CFD, if we do every project that's currently entitled, we will collect 72.2 million among all the jurisdictions.
Hopefully.
And thereafter, if we add new projects, we potentially have the ability to raise 55.2 million.
That's at the same rate as the CFD?
The current 24,000 per residential. I know it's something else. So the key point that I think Ms. Schreiner was trying to clarify was that if you collect the money to pay for the projects, that yes, there'll be some trimming of projects or postponement. It's not that you cut them, but there'll be some postponement until whenever that happens in the future, which could be 50 years. We don't know, Jan. I, I, I know in the TAC, we've talked about that repeatedly, but I think it's important for everybody, including the public, to understand. It's not an obligation until you build.
Thank you. I'm going to move us on from this because if you'd like to bring that point up again later in the discussion, that's fine. But for right now, let's move on. Are there any other questions on the material that Ms. Damon presented thus far? Let's go to public comment. Anyone from the public that would like to comment at this point on the three items that have been discussed so far? You're very welcome to do that. Okay, seeing none, let's go back to Ms. Damon and ask her to continue the presentation.
All right. How do we do? Okay, 11:15. I'll try to get through this. Going to transportation. There is our Highway 1. We have quite a background in transportation.
We have quite a background in transportation, but suffice it to say, we started the process with a Public Facilities Improvement Program. And then we prepared, and Tamsi prepared, a four-door regional transportation study. The base reuse plan was adopted with a statement of overriding considerations, which overrode significant transportation and cumulative transportation impacts. The 1997 four-door transportation study was an important one. It looked at four-door as a single project. So, as we go through the transition project, process, and we start breaking it down, it's important to note that our program treats the entire zone as one zone. And the annual CIP assures adequate service levels. And that's not just for transportation. That's for habitat, transportation, water, fire, storm drainage, within resource constraints. That was in the defined resource, or the constrained resource management plan, which is a part of the base reuse plan, section 3.11, .5, .6. So, how do we fund that network? Well, we fund it mainly with our community facilities district fees. We've been talking about that. We started that in 2002. Prior to that, we had a development impact fee. We replaced most of that development impact fee with this special tax. And then, as we move forward in the planning process, we go through Tamsi and FORA, go through a fee reallocation study. So, it's a truing, I call this truing of is the network doing what it's supposed to do? And are we contributing what we're supposed to be contributing as we move forward? And information is refined in the Tamsi planning process, and all the general plans and city plans are updated. It all goes into the transportation modeling that pops out those reallocation studies. So, let's talk about what FORA has funded. FORA actually has done quite a bit of funding on the roads. And this is part of the history, and it's a partial listing. But this is what's shown in your Capital Improvement Program. You can see that from inception to date, we've spent about $52 million. That translates to about $84 million in 2018 dollars. What's not shown on this list are the other projects FORA has been involved with. Inner Garrison Road, Highway 218 improvements. There's some intersection improvements. Reservation Road and Neeson Road improvements that aren't shown on this list. UC Embass Center Drive. Some South Boundary Road improvements and some improvements at Life Fighter. So, there are substantial amount of transportation projects that have already been implemented and addressed in that integrated transportation network. Function analysis. Why do we do transportation? Well, we do it because, or what do we do? We do two big things with respect to transportation. We build basewide infrastructure. So, those six projects that I showed you earlier, we build those. And we revenue share for others. Those are your, and we do a prioritization. We go through, we say, "How much money is coming in? What are the projects that we have? Where are they in the planning process?" We go through that process. That's what the FORA program does. Why do we do that? We're required by our enabling legislation to do that. We have implementation agreements that require us to do that. Our base reuse plan requires us to do that. Will all those improvements be done prior to 2020? No. Estimated outstanding obligation is about $132.3 million. What are some of your options? Well, you could extend the FORA CFD, which is revenue generation, revenue sharing, and prioritization. You could assign roads and the funding to the underlying jurisdictions. So, off-site roads go back to the underlying jurisdictions and identify where revenue sharing needs to occur and who it needs to occur to. So, some of those have reimbursement contracts. So, for example, the County of Monterey has a reimbursement contract on its Davis Road project. It won't be fully funded prior to 2020. That reimbursement contract might be assigned maybe to, I don't know, Marina, just picking on you, only because you have the most development already entitled in the jurisdiction. But it could be assigned to Delray Oaks. It could be assigned to any jurisdiction, which means the county would come to you to reimburse the costs for that project. So, here is a chart, another way of looking at what we looked at earlier. Off-site, and here I'm just focusing on the off-site and the onsite. And the only ones that are really important in terms of assignment, well, they're all important. But the ones that FORA has to build are the ones that a jurisdiction will have to build if they're not completed prior to 2020. So, those are shown and highlighted in the yellow. Everything else is a funding obligation. And they have proposed already, the lead agencies are basically the assigned agencies. There's an assignment column, and there's an estimated date of completion of those obligations. These are obligations that are in our CIP. They don't become liabilities until the projects actually go. That's when they become liabilities. But right now, they are obligations. This is what it looks like. Here's what it looks like total. So, we showed this information to the TAC, and I thought it was helpful showing the picture to the entire board. Your onsite and your off-site roads, as that chart summarized them, broken down by jurisdiction. So, the county ends up with about $52 million of onsite and off-site roads. Some of them are billed obligations for the county, and some of them are funding obligations. Delray Oaks has about $8 million. Marina, 13.3. Seaside, 9.2. For a total of about $83 million in onsite and off-site roads. Those are not Tamsi regional roads, and they are not the MST transit obligations. We're just talking about roads. What is it that we have to build and contribute to? How much money is FORA going to be putting toward those roads and that network, those projects in the jurisdictions? Well, you can see the county is estimated to get about $4 million for their projects prior to 2020. Delray Oaks, it has one of the four billed projects. We've projected $8 million. So, that road is anticipated to be fully funded prior to 2020 and built. Marina gets about 1.5 for the Del Monte Road extension, which is entering into the CEQA process. And there's some reimbursements that we're anticipating coming down the pike. Seaside, about 1.2 for its road projects. For a total of about $15 million. But post-2020, there's still a significant impact in terms of roads and an unfunded amount of dollars and projects. You see, the county has got the most with $48 million. Marina has a pretty hefty amount, $11 million. Seaside's got about eight, for a total of $67 million. But just to compare that with the revenues that the FORA program would have raised, these are revenues based on development entitlements. How much money do you raise on your projects? Well, the county is projected to only raise $13 million, 13.9, under the FORA program if it continues to build like it's projected to. Marina's got, again, the big number, 55 million, because of its projects that are entitled and have been projected in the Capital Improvement Program. Seaside notices got 2.6. That's because it doesn't have very much entitled development. So, it's not going to be able to, it couldn't even fully pay for that. It might be able to pay for it with its future development. There are opportunities in the proposed development arena to, it's easier to capture these revenues with a new revenue generation source than it is to capture the revenues for already entitled development. So, some of your key issues. Who completes the FORA Lead Agency Improvements? Those are the ones that we have proposed assignments for, those six projects. South Boundary Road upgrade, if we don't finish that prior to 2020. Inner Garrison Road, General Jim Boulevard, Northeast-Southwest Corridor, Giggling Road, Eucalyptus Road. What is the schedule for the FORA Lead Agency project completion? When do we finish those projects that FORA was going to build? What is the schedule for the FORA network completion? When do we finish funding everything that's in our Capital Improvement Program? How do we ensure the four-door zone network obligations are met, monitored, and reassessed? So, how does that reassessment happen? How do we ensure they are funded equitably and timely? And how do we handle cost overruns from munitions and explosives unknowns? So, several of the projects that FORA is Lead Agency on cross ESCA areas, areas that are subject to cleanup, and they have special construction support plans. It's very likely that you might find some munitions or explosives during that construction process, which could lead to halting the project, cost overruns, et cetera. How is that addressed for those projects that get assigned out? And some of your considerations. These are in your plan. Assign your transportation liabilities as outlined in your spreadsheets. And there are two spreadsheets here. One is the spreadsheet of contracts with the reimbursement agreements. And the second one is that sheet that we looked at with the project assignments. Who gets projects, the outstanding projects for transportation? Upon termination of FORA, FORA's regional monetary obligations transferred to Tamsi and funded by Tamsi's fee structure. I think Tamsi is already undergoing its, a review of its regional transportation fee, which would address some of the regional impacts in the FORA zone. But I don't think they're currently looking at the onsite and the off-site obligations in this process. That would be part of, part of the overall costs. For off-site reimbursement would be transferred to the underlying jurisdictions where the projects are located, so those lead agencies. FORA Lead Agency Improvements transferred to the jurisdiction where the project is located primarily. And finally, jurisdictions would need to create their own replacement financing districts and either deposit monies into a single entity escrow account or have revenue sharing agreements between jurisdictions in order to share that revenue generation. Here's your side-by-side analysis on transition. The biggest issue on transition is the capture of revenues on the entitled development. There's some other, other issues as well that you can see there with respect to transition. More jurisdictional vulnerability to lawsuits as you go on your individual ways. Less ability to influence regional outcomes. Neighbor jurisdictions may not be very accommodating, depending on what you're doing to the roads and how you're designing or redesigning them. Replacing the revenue is obviously an issue. And the transportation network might not get fully implemented, or it might be put on indefinite delay. Extension, on the other hand, comes with some benefits. The revenue generation and sharing and prioritization program is in place. But on the other hand, it's cumbersome. Let's face it, we spend a lot of time in administrative committee going through that process and at the board going through that process. We also are a single target for purposes of lawsuits. We have a big old red FORA, that O in FORA is a bullseye. Easier to target a single entity. So, moving on to, oh yeah, habitat. Oh, that habitat, four-door lands out there. Little Legless Lizard and a Tiger Salamander. History, a long history as expected on habitat. When the Army closed the base, they were required to have a habitat management plan as mitigation for closing the base, or reducing the size, the footprint of the base. At that time, it was decided that they would not be pursuing, pursuing a basewide implementation program, because it was, A, hard to negotiate and finalize the details, and it didn't match with the schedule, which then left us, us FORA and the local jurisdictions, with the option of proceeding on a habitat conservation program to do the basewide implementation of habitat management and protection and getting the permits required for the projects that would, were anticipated to develop on the base. Spent a lot of time negotiating that. We're still negotiating that. It's not finalized. We're hopeful to release it this year and get it undergoing review, public review and board review. But it's unlikely to be fully adopted by the time this transition plan is submitted to LAFCO, which means we will have a alternative in there. And you'll see in the recommendations, we do address that as a potential alternative to having a completed habitat conservation program in place. August of 2018 is when we anticipate releasing that. So, what is it that FORA does with respect to habitat? Well, we do habitat management, but it's little known that we actually go out in the field and manage some habitat. We also reimburse others for their habitat management as it relates to integration with the FORA habitat areas. So, one of the very progressive things that FORA did early on in the base reuse plan is integrated habitat protection. It connected the UC habitat lands all the way across the base, going into the BLM lands, all the way over to basically 218. That is a swath of integrated habitat that was virtually unknown previously, having those habitat corridors in place. Very forward-thinking at the time base reuse plan was put in place. We also do planning in terms of not only seeking that basewide habitat conservation plan and the appropriate take permits for the base, on a basewide basis, but also providing jurisdictional assistance for other kinds of habitat protection, like oak woodlands. We've been going to the counties, considering their oak woodlands policy. Seaside's considering, or has considered their policy. FORA staff is providing that additional support pursuant to board policy for those, those things. Finally, we generate revenues through our community facilities district fees or the habitat conservation program, whether that's an HCP or a backup plan. So, you've got some key issues that were discussed by TAC and I think are appropriate for discussion by the board. What happens if Fish and Wildlife or California Department of Fish and Wildlife did not approve the basewide habitat conservation plan or the take permits prior to transition? That would be prior to 2020. Who is the successor to the basewide HCP 2081 permit? If there is no habitat cooperative forum? So, it's always been anticipated that a joint powers agency that is focused on protecting habitat and managing the long-term habitat obligations on a basewide basis would be formed. But what happens if that's not formed in a timely manner? How do we implement that basewide program? How are replacement funds allocated or generated? And how is the endowment funded without the FORA Community Facilities District Fee? Is it only placed, the burden placed only on new development? Right now, habitat protection is a basewide obligation. The entire base pays to protect the bountiful habitat lands that we have on four-door. Is that going to shift as we break the program, as the program transitions? What are the obligations under the habitat management program that the Army entered into and applied to every single transfer on the base? We have to comply with all, everybody who's received property has to comply with that big habitat management plan. It's just implemented deed by deed instead of on a basewide basis right now. And is it feasible for individuals to process take permits with Fish and Wildlife and California Department of Fish and Wildlife? What are the development costs? And can or should those costs be shifted, as I was talking about before, from a basewide cost to an individual cost? How do jurisdictions finance the removal of invasive species and habitat restoration? So, for those jurisdictions that have habitat management areas, and there are some. Marina has one. The county has a large number of acres, I think about 500 acres in the county lands, that you have to have some management of. The habitat management plan requires you to do that. In the absence of an HCP, you're going to be required to deal with that. So, some of the considerations that I think we have come up with are to assign those obligations as outlined in the spreadsheet attachment. Form the Joint Powers Authority now. That was a strong recommendation that I think, there are only a few items where the TAC had pretty much unanimous consensus, and I think this is one of them. Hey, guys, we're going to have a JPA. Get on it. Let's form that JPA now so that we can take that one off the table. And there's a note here about LAFCO assigning to an un- And there's a note here about LAFCO assigning to an unformed or non-legal entity. LAFCO can't really assign an obligation to an entity that hasn't been, is not in legal existence, which is one of the reasons why I think there was consensus. Get the JPA in legal existence, even if you don't have everything in play. If you think you're going to need it, put it in play. If the JPA is not formed prior to the LAFCO action on the transition plan, designate successor entities which have Habitat management areas are responsible for the long-term management of those areas with the provision that they may limit individual liability by participation in a future JPA. So give yourself an either/or. It's an individual jurisdiction, but if the JPA is formed after we approve, after the board approves the transition plan, but before LAFCO does it, they can limit liability or adjust liability by participation in a JPA that's formed kind of in that in-between Have the jurisdictions deposit on a pro rata share the HCP endowment amounts into an escrow account. Have FORA and Fish and Wildlife continue to do the sequin NIPA on the basewide implementation program. So that might not be finished prior to 2020, or it'll be pretty close to being completed before 2020, but continue to have FORA do that so it's in play for future JPA. You will have your sequin done on a basewide implementation program if this board decides to go continue down that route. Have FORA provide staffing to the Habitat Cooperative, and I will just put a note here that as it's currently drafted, the Habitat Cooperative, once it's formed, will have its own independent discretion as to continuing staffing by FORA staff or obtaining new staff to, to staff that once it's in legal existence. And then should the HCP, and this is, I think, the big one that the board will want to discuss when we discuss the HCP in more detail. Should the HCP or the Habitat Conservation, Habitat Cooperative fail, create a two-pronged approach to addressing the Habitat management? One is a fund for future projects which have to go get take permits and take the monies that will be collected by FORA through its CFD on a basewide basis. Prior to that, which is projected at about $21 million, break it into two pots. One is a pot for development projects and one is for jurisdictions to use for long-term management of their Habitat management areas. That's kind of the backup plan, if you will, to the HCP or a suggestion for board consideration. So here's your side-by-side transitioning. Jurisdictions might want to withdraw from that cooperative. There are lots of provisions in there, but it's always been anticipated that a JPA would be doing the long-term Habitat management. The big issue is revenue generation and how you fund the endowment and whether you shift that from a tax which applies to all development on the base, whether you have an impact or not, a nexus impact or not, to new development only, which has a nexus impact on Habitat. Extension, on the other hand, there are some economies of scale continuing with the CFD in particular provides an ongoing steady stream of basewide funding. So there's a certain amount of continuity that allows the endowment fund to be fully funded. Oops, did I jump? Yeah, I did. Well, we're going to finances, financial chapter, next chapter. So financial history. This is basically where you start to see the implementation agreements. Your biggest asset at FORA are the implementation agreements, which commit the jurisdictions to a lot of things and FORA to a lot of things. One is revenue generation, land sales revenues, development fees, property tax revenues being put toward completing the basewide costs and basewide mitigation measures. You also have, that's the Community Facilities District Fee, which will sunset at 2020. And that's basically what we have in the financial section. What do we do? We raise money. We revenue generate with our financial documents. Why do we do it or how do we do it? We do it by the Authority Act and actually by the Health and Safety Code. The Authority Act says we are supposed to put together a public financing program to implement our basewide costs and mitigation measures. And the Health and Safety Code actually directs the property taxes into the FORA revenue generation program. Will it be complete prior to 2020? No. What are your options? Replace the revenue streams and provide revenue transfers to the agencies that complete the program. Issues about collection from entitled development, we've talked a lot about that. That's the biggest issue, one of the biggest issues facing FORA transition, I think. Extend the FORA financing mechanism, which contains both revenue generation, revenue sharing. Or three, break down the program. Transfer replacement funding obligations to those entities that are completing the program may result in funding deficits. So as you start to transfer the program and you move to a nexus base or you're limited to only collecting fees on a nexus base, you might lose fees because of lack of nexus and/or you might lose fees because it's a new fee that you would be putting on entitled development, which entitled development does not like new fees. I think we've talked about these key issues. How are the revenues generated? How are we going to assess entitled development? Capture it, that's about $72 million. If we replace the CFD, how are revenues transfers handled between entities? So revenue sharing for their portions of basewide costs and mitigation measures? Can the development fee, there's a development fee also in addition to our Community Facilities District Fee, be assigned to the successor, a successor for those areas? So Community Facilities Districts are not subject to LAFCO jurisdiction, but I believe development impact fees are subject to LAFCO jurisdiction. So maybe possible to transfer the areas that are covered by that development impact fee to the underlying jurisdiction intact? Can the implementation agreements be assigned and do they require the jurisdictions by contract to finish paying for those basewide costs and committing their land sales revenues, replacing the development fees or facilities district fees and replacing the equivalent amount of property taxes, putting those fees into an escrow or into an account to pay for basewide costs and mitigations? Here's some of your considerations. Assign your financial documents as authorized in the spreadsheet or as outlined in the spreadsheet. Any financial shortfalls would be assigned under the implementation agreements to jurisdictions on a pro rata basis. An escrow account, so here's your single entity, and single entity collection account, either escrow account at the county if they're willing to do that. An entity would collect, a single collection place set up and the land use jurisdictions would submit, deposit all their fees into that account. That account would be distributed on the basis of reimbursement agreement. So as those projects are completed, you would submit your bill to the escrow and the escrow would say, okay, I dotted, crossed, he crossed, submit it out. Still leaves some issues relative to prioritization. How do you adjust if there's not enough revenues to pay for the invoices as they come in? Should the FORA CFD or and/or other financing streams be extended for any period of time? Any resulting revenues deposited could be also deposited into a single escrow account, thus reducing jurisdictional obligations. Jurisdiction or successor board would be free to negotiate any future revenue sharing agreements. So you've got lots of options and lots of considerations for this chapter. Here's your side-by-side with respect to transition. Your pluses, you get flexibility to develop new financing streams. So for those jurisdictions that have new development or proposed development, you have flexibility to not only capture the revenues that we would have captured under the FORA program, but if you wanted to change the structure, you wanted to charge a lesser amount to a smaller housing unit, for example, you have that kind of flexibility when you establish a new financing mechanism. Unfortunately, those jurisdictions that have entitled development don't have quite as much flexibility. On the other hand, it creates some potential landmines. You could be sued, those fees could be challenged. It's uncertain. The one good thing about FORA fee program, it's been in existence for a long time and it's beyond challenge. So that's a plus comparing the two. On the other hand, there's a downside to extending the FORA CFD, and that is its structure. Its current structure does not allow a whole bunch of changes inside to assess smaller residential units, a lesser fee to promote an affordable housing type situation. We could do that, but it would require a vote right now to change that program to adjust the fee structure inside of it. So that's a downside. There are a lot of pluses. It continues, it has a nice continuity of revenue streams, it captures already entitled development, it's because it's an existing fee and it has an adjustment mechanism built in with it. Moving on, environmental services. Boom. This is your ESCA, your cleanup contract. Long history, I'm not going to go through this in detail, but suffice it to say there are lots of reasons why we did this, but the main reason is the early, whoops, wrong way. Why do we do it? Well, we have contract, or what do we do? We're a contractor to the Army for the cleanup of the, of about 3,340 acres on four-door, former four-door. Why are we doing it? We did it because of board policy. We wanted, and the region wanted access to those 3,340 acres sooner than what the Army would guarantee they could transfer it and clean it up to the local community. So this is very novel. It's again four-door on the cutting edge of moving forward in military base reuse. We entered into a contract with the Army and that, it's, there are two contracts. There's one with the Army, actually there's three contracts. There's lots of contracts. There's an administrative order on consent, which is where the federal regulator said you must do this in order to clean up and comply with the laws. There's a contract with the Department of Toxic Substance Control, state regulators saying what we have to do and how we have to do it. There's an agreement with the Army. There are agreements with insurers, how we manage funds in order to do this. So there's a lot of complicated overlap, but the bottom line is the Army funded the cleanup and we are almost completed with that cleanup and are hopeful to be done by 2019. There will be some post 2020 work, but there is a contract amendment that authorizes funds to reimburse whoever is the successor for UXO training, construction support, transfer monitoring, response review. So what happens if you find something in an area that you don't expect to find it? Reviewing that, evaluating that, land use control, monitoring and reporting and liaison between the jurisdictions and the regulators and the Army. So all that is part of the Army contract and what is going to be required and done post 2020. There are some contractual limitations on your options, however. You have to have a single entity that's in the ESCA contract. It can only be Monterey County, Seaside, Marina, or a joint powers agency if it's approved by LAFCO. Or you can extend for it. Those are your only options with respect to the ESCA obligations that we've contractually agreed to. Whoops, wrong way. Key issue, who is the successor? How will the successor share the resources and responsibilities? Will the ESCA funds, which are currently priced for a single coordinated entity, be enough if there's a different kind of management structure? So right now you have the FORA structure, which has all the participants together. It's integrated, could change. What agreements need to be in place to share ESCA resources? What additional management structure will ES, will the successor need to develop to implement and manage ESCA? So if FORA staff doesn't go with this contract, you know, what, how does that, how is that program going to be managed? Where will the ESCA offices be located to provide appropriate support requirements? So some of those considerations, assign them as they are outlined on the spreadsheets. County and Seaside to form a JPA as a single contact with the Army. The JPA would receive the remaining FORA funds in contractual agreement with the Army and/or any insurance policies related to ESCA cleanup. And/or you might consider extending FORA with a limited ESCA function to complete the Army contract. So some of the benefits of transition are a, you could have a FORA light to, well, you can have a JPA to complete the ESCA work or ES, and FORA ESCA employees might be able to be retained to complete that work. On the other hand, there are a lot of potential risks on the pink side. The ESCA function has been, has a lot of expertise inside of the FORA offices, so there's possibility you might lose the technical staff on that, depending on what structure is set up. Someone has to cover the transferred employee salaries, benefits, curves, et cetera. And ESCA may be able to be transferred to the county to cover, I think this needs to be updated, to cover the employees' insurance and program costs, any gap. So there's, there could be some gaps in transition that are not covered by the Army's contract. It's a reimbursement contract. On the other hand, extension, basically your program stays in place, but you still have some of those unknown financial risks that the extension of the Army contract might not cover some things, and that's a risk both in extension and transition. Oh, we're to public comment. How are we doing? Five minutes to 12 even, just about lunchtime.
So again, I'll ask the question, are there any clarifying questions from board members before we go to public comments? There is, there are two. First, Jan, do you want to go ahead and ask your question? Please tell us what slide you're referring to. Thank you.
Okay, this is a question, it actually is kind of between two slides. The first on page six, it's slide number, I think 16, if I'm reading it correctly. It gives the start dates for some of the transportation assignments. And then I want to compare a couple of numbers to page 13, slide, I believe 39. So I noticed, I was writing as Ms. Damon was speaking, the start dates for Salinas Avenue and Marina Project is 2022 on page six, slide 16. And that would be the start date 2022. And then on page 13, slide 39, the completion date is 2122. I know Marina is good, but there may be a discrepancy and I wanted to kind of compare those two slides if you can get the two together.
I can answer that very simply. Yes, it's discrepancy. The first slide is the correct slide. This, this slide is in part a carryover, so the estimated completion dates were from the last capital improvement program and they haven't been fully updated to reflect the 2018, 2019 new estimated completion dates.
So my, my reason for being such a stickler on making sure the years are in alignment is in part going back to what Councilmember Morton was saying. It makes a difference in my mind whether the fees have been collected, the project has been started versus we're just proposing this and it seems like a good idea and it seemed like a good idea 20 years ago and that's why we're obligated to continue.
Okay, so I'm going to interrupt for a minute because that's sort of moving on to the next phase of discussion with the board as a group, and I'm going to go to the next question. Did that answer your question, Jan?
I think that the answer was. I think that the answer was the slide on page six needed to be updated, is that right?
Slide on page thirty-nine.
It needs to update. So the start dates on page six are correct, and this, we should look at with maybe two or three years.
I will update the slides for the final transition plan. We will make sure they match the 2018, 2019 capital improvement program.
So today we do not know.
We do know.
What the completion dates are.
We do know on page six, those dates that are in that table are based on your 2018, 2019 plan, and those are the best estimates that have been provided by the land use jurisdictions and by FORA in terms of completing the projects.
Thank you. Question from Mr. Hoffa.
So this is on slide forty, and then I think Mayor Carbon also has a question on that too after I'm done. So on, this to me seems like one of the most important slides, and I'm trying to understand basically what the implications are, and I wonder if you could address, I mean, in essence, so the CFD post-2020 entitled versus the CFD post-2020 proposed, could you just say, expand on that? Like, in essence, who are, which cities are, would be so, so to speak winners, which cities would be losers if this were to happen? Because I don't fully understand that.
I hesitate to use the word winners and losers because I've used that term before and I got, you know, let's suffice it to say that in terms of the county, based on their development, the entitled development inside the county is projected to raise thirteen point nine million dollars in CFD revenues, which would then be put into the FORA capital improvement program and shared in accordance with the priorities that this board reviews with respect to the capital improvement program. Likewise, Marina post-2020 would be generating fifty-five million. That's based on, I know that Ms. Morton is going to, is ready to jump at me, but that's based upon the jurisdictions' projections to FORA. They've given FORA information, and we ask for that information every year as we go through the capital improvement program of what the projected development is within each jurisdiction. So based on that post-2020, it's fifty-five million dollars in their entitled development. And I will also note that our capital improvement program right now stops in 2029 because all of these obligations are fully funded and addressed by 2029 based on those development projections. So, again, this is just post, this is just adding post-2020. So fifty-five million is the biggest amount of development that's already been approved. That means that in the absence of anything else or future water reduction, the development that's entitled in Marina will build. Its water resources have been committed. Marina Coast Water District has given serve letters for the entitled development. It is the only development. Those jurisdictions that have entitled development will be the only ones that build if there's a water scaling back. Future development is a lot more speculative. So Seaside, at twenty-six million, they have two big projects that are coming down the pike, their campus town and their main gate project, but they also have Seaside East in their planning area. They, they have a potential for twenty-six million, and that is limited by a cap. That is assuming all the augmented water supply goes in play and that they can move forward with what they would like to go forward with. Delray Oaks is the other future revenue generator with twenty million dollars for future proposed fees, but that's based on if their project gets to go forward and their developments, and they are able to get the water that they need to proceed with that. So, and then Seaside has a little tiny piece of entitled only, that's the Seaside Resort Project. It's not fully built out, which is why you see a number here on post-2020 entitled development fees. It's still a fairly minor amount. The biggest one is Marina. Is that enough?
I think for now, yeah, but I think Mayor Carbon has a question.
Okay, next question.
Hi, this is Mayor Carbon, and I had a question, and this may be very small or considered splitting hairs, but in, at a previous meeting, I heard a question from Councilwoman Nancy Amadeo in regard to a par, partial portion of a road not being in their jurisdiction, but it was listed as it was, and I believe it may have been part of Del Monte Extension.
Yeah, actually, that is the Del Monte Road Extension, and her comment had to do with the fact that the road appeared to be located on Fort Ord, and so instead of being considered an off-site road, she would have liked it to be characterized as an onsite road. And I think Jonathan can provide, he told me the answer at one point in time, but I have so much in my brain right now, I'm not sure I remember exactly why he told me that it's considered off-site.
It's considered off-site, similarly California Avenue, both, which is built now, but was built by FORA. It connects to existing Marina, so that connection makes it in the category of off-site. And Del Monte Boulevard Extension similarly would serve a similar function as California Avenue does today. So it connects off-site off of Fort Ord.
Thank you. There was another question from Supervisor Parker.
Thank you. Yes, my question is about the HCP and the HMP. Do we know whether...
Is there a particular slide that you're looking at?
Well, it is discussed on slides forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, but I think my question is, probably, yeah, probably most relevant to this slide. The, the HMP is, is in place, it's a federal set of requirements around habitat. We have twenty-one million dollars so far that's been collected, it looks like. Do we have any sense for whether the twenty-one million dollars might be sufficient to address the kinds of requirements that are in the HMP? And I'm just thinking about if for some reason the HCP is not achievable, that's largely about the take permits, and that could be something that the individual jurisdictions, development by development, could work out with, with the entities. It may not be ideal in some way, but it's already been happening because we don't have an HCP. But I'm just curious about the, the HMP requirements and how stringent those are and whether the twenty-one million dollars might be sufficient to, to cover those.
I think that would need additional analysis, Supervisor Parker, but suffice it to say that what we've proposed is an alternative, and that might be your only alternative as you've outlined to use. And by the way, that estimated twenty-one million is by June thirtieth, 2020. I don't have that right now. I have about eighteen plus or minus, I think, in our coffers today, but we're anticipating another few million to bring it up to twenty-one million by June thirtieth, 2020. So what we've suggested is take the funds on hand to the extent, do that calculation, set it up for long-term management of those habitat management areas, and then if there's any additional or create a revolving loan pool or some other way. And you could do it on a project-by-project basis, which is what I thought I heard you suggesting, but this is suggesting if we have some extra, try to create a base-wide, some way to share in the base-wide so that it's not fully born only by a development project, but rather spread across the base, which is how it is now as a base-wide cost.
Any other questions from board members? All right, we'll go to public comment. Does the public want to comment, make any comment? Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss somebody? Oh, Ms. Hale?
Sure. Just want to provide a clarification. I believe that Sherry mentioned that the TMC regional fee, work that we're doing now is looking at just the regional projects. It actually is looking at the regional and the off-site projects.
A hundred percent of the off-site projects? Or just the FORA share of the off-site projects?
The off-site projects.
I think, well, this is one slide.
We're looking at all of them. We have some recommendations on them, but there, we took a look at them in the, in the Nexus analysis, which takes a look, just for further clarification, the Nexus analysis is a term that's used for, at least in our context, for development of a traffic impact fee, and the Nexus is what is the impact that that project has on the road? It has to be linked to the project that you're, you're collecting fees on, so that's kind of jargon-y word.
So in terms of, I'm going to ask a question, but in terms, just so I can make sure that we have complete, are the off-site projects that are listed on this chart the ones that you, that TMC is reviewing and/or is there anything on the onsite list as it's currently identified in the FORA transportation program that's, that TMC is including? Because it disagrees either with characterization or...
No, the regional projects and the off-site projects.
Just those six projects.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't look at the onsite improvements.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other question, comment from board member? All right, out to the public. Anybody like to make a comment from the public? Please, to the extent that you can, about two minutes so we can keep this moving, we need to be out of here by one-thirty.
Sure. This applies also to the first part of the discussion, but it's a general attempt to try to get your head around all the details. And I'm suggesting that the image that comes to mind is that FORA has had an opportunity to rent a five-bedroom home since nineteen ninety-four. You're headed toward a one-bedroom home of sorts, and what is it that you can shed? What is it that you can pass on? And I, I want to encourage you to think that where FORA as a central body has the most ability to be flexible with the other jurisdictions, with the other functions. And it seems to me the financial side may be the key cornerstone of what continuation in a one-bedroom structure would be like, and mainly it's the facilities, community facilities district. Because that funding mechanism, if it's passed on, is a terribly complicated thing for the jurisdictions to try to implement. But since it's centralized now and it's in place and it can continue under the existing structure, under the continuation, that that ought to be a guiding principle. Also, according to the feds, they want some single-point designations. That's also a guiding principle for you. The other thing is where there are existing functions that can be handled and are being handled now by the jurisdictions, whether it's a city or TMC or the water, Marina Coast, it seems to me you ought to assume that all those functions would be transferred. You just assume that. But the only thing you might have thoughts about are some of the on-base transportation issues that you need to sort out, and maybe the fair, the fair share concepts of how that applies. I just think there's some organizing principles about how you go forward, and I hope you think about those. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Any other comment?
Just a couple. Lane Long, City Manager of Marina, and I appreciate Debbie Hale's comments because that was partly one of the questions I had with the transportation part, is the off-site projects right now are being funded by CFD funds, and if an option is that TMC can take those and distribute them by Nexus to really the impact, that would also reduce that. The other question is, these transportation projects that shows this huge deficit, we're all, you had put on the, the list in nineteen ninety-seven, much has changed in twenty years, and perhaps we need to step back and, and look at really which projects we can really fund, because in the one chart you show sixty-seven million projected in future land sale revenues, but those don't really take into account blight removal, and I think that number will drop down dramatically. Then you show proposed CFD fees for proposed developments, and again, we don't know if those are happening, so maybe we need to do an exercise and go back these projects twenty years ago and say realistically, what projects can we fund? Which really are the high priority projects? Which ones do the CFDs really have the capability to fund? It's kind of like Supervisor Parker's comment with the HMP. It's like realistically what we have, can we scale it down to really the revenues that we have and, and maybe focus on that for the transportation end? Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Are there other comments? All right, may I turn this back to the chair or to the executive officer for a break? We're going to take a break.
Okay, let's go ahead and break for lunch and bring it back in.
Yes, there, there's a, a number of boxes outside, and I understand there's a, a sort of a wafting of Italian flavors coming from them. So there's, there's some pizza, there's some makings for sandwiches, some fruit, and hopefully it's enough for everybody here if people would be judicious in their use of the food.